Who's here?
Gil.
John Gil.
John Gil just logged on.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the Plan Commission Study Session for Tana St. John. Roll call, please.
Bob Rolson.
Here.
Yolanda Cardona. John Gil.
Here.
Donna Little. Jason Blasick. Nancy Wooland.
Here.
John Kennedy.
Here.
Attorney Adam Decker.
Here.
Engineer Ken Kraus.
Here.
Councilman liaison Brian Blazak.
Present.
And town manager Chris Salatas.
Present.
All right, thank you, John. We have a quorum, so we are good to go. This is a study session, so informative, no actions taken. So first on the agenda, St. John Commons, Nick.
Good evening. Nick Giorgio, Sumac Architects, 912 West Avenue, H. Griffiths. We came in tonight to see, we've been, I actually pulled up my calendar. We first met with Sergio back in February, and we've been here almost every month as we've evolved through this project. And hopefully, we've developed something that was a very good development for St. John. Anyways, we did, when we came for the public hearing last two weeks ago, unfortunately, with the snafu with the publication, it actually, I thought it turned out beneficial for us because it turns out most of the people who were present here were for our item for, because they, everyone went out and walked out when we walked out when it was postponed. But we ended up having, I thought, very productive discussions with at least six, eight of those people, and we heard some of their concerns. And I was going to relay some of the comments we got. The people who lived immediately to the southwest off of Greystone, their initial concern was, they said, "We didn't want, we ought to make sure that the residential or the road doesn't continue through the development." We assured them it does not. We had further discussions. They were happy with that. We did tell them that there's going to be two houses or two lots there to the southwest. And ironically or coincidentally, one of them said, "My neighbor from Illinois wants to move here. Can you give me your card?" I mean, it turned out to be a friendly discussion. We've talked to a representative to the east off of, behind the villas. Same concern was, is the residential connected to the commercial? And we said, "No, it's not. The residential component is totally residential. It's segregated, does not connect over the, over the commercial areas." I literally had a call today from one of the individuals who was at the, came to the meeting for the public, and he lives on Greystone, immediately to the south. And his concern was how close the bike path was to the residences along that south border. Because he literally noted how we had it, I called it meandering, curving. He says, "Currently, right now, they get people walking their dogs loose, they get motorbikes, ATVs, et cetera, that come, that go back and forth along the back of the residential." His concern was that the bike path at least be kept as far north and as straight as possible, literally was his comment. He says he looked forward to the ability to walk to the retail development if there's restaurants there in the future, and he lived immediately adjacent there. He started asking in detail questions about landscaping and seating, et cetera. I mean, and literally, the quote was, "It's a great project. Hopefully, it all happens, but we have a concern about where the bike path runs adjacent to our properties there." I think most of the concerns were on that the residential is segregated from the commercial. We talked to several people and said, "The only entrance to the commercial is off of Calumet. You can't get through it on either of the residential streets." And that was the intent. Nathan and both Ron and Brad also discussed with some of the individuals who attended out there. I don't know if they have anything they want to add to the comments.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Nathan Vis with Vis Law, 11700 West 126. Appreciate everyone's time tonight. It was a really good conversation that we had with the folks. Some of the conversations that I had with some persons were about the pond and whether or not it would be a stagnant pond, or what sort of efforts that would be ongoing to maintain to make sure that the water was flowing, it would become stagnant. So we shared with them the efforts that we're going to be undertaking there. Another concern that was raised was lighting as to the residential portion to the south. Was able to show the folks that were there, the plans that we've already submitted as to lighting, and they greatly appreciated that. The only other item that I would comment on is some comments or questions were raised as to the mixed-use style that's being proposed. That's a bit newer to this area. Just want to pass along, I also serve as the president of the Cedar Lake Redevelopment Commission, and in my capacity there, we're getting more and more interest from developers. Just talked to someone from Carmel this past week, wondering what the appetite is here in Lake County for similar developments that they're doing down here that we're proposing here. So it's really exciting to see that we're kind of on the cutting edge here in Lake County, here in St. John. So that's just some of the comments that I received at that meeting.
Great. Again, I don't know if we answered all of your comments or questions. I think the last round, which was a couple of months ago before we advertised, where we addressed the parking size of the parking spaces, which were upgraded to 10 by 20. We massaged our parking count and et cetera, and we moved the layout around. As I said, also, when we finally got the final survey, we actually found out we have a little more room to play with in terms of encroaching into the high-tension line easement. We have nominal encroachment, and, which is good in terms of our ability then to hopefully work better with trying to get the, those couple of service roads that we have on the retail side into that encroachment. Any other, I could cite, any other comments or questions or feedback?
Questions, comments? Nick, thank you for being here for 11 months, 10. I do have a couple more questions. Signage, I know you and I talked about that, my initial concern. Did you ever figure out what the square footage of just the signage is and not the whole monument sign? I don't need it tonight, but maybe have it.
No, I literally looked up, I was looking at the signage ordinance today, and it talks about the signage of the material, and it talks about, in the, well, it's only an ordinance, it talks about different materials, but it talks about the measurement being of the signed face. And I guess that'd be a discussion for interpretation with Sergio or Chris or whatever, because, well, one, I know, I do know that the monument signs exceed the height that's in the zoning ordinance. It says a 10-foot maximum. I know on the, at least on their entrances on Calumet, those are much larger. I was actually, it also entitles every tenant to have a sign on their building, and the, I guess the clarification I'd like to have actually, because it talks about monument signs per zoning lot, and theoretically, since we're a PUD, and I could argue, or Nathan, maybe Nathan could argue that we have multiple lots, i.e. the way we've segregated the development. I mean, we're open to the discussion, and we're open to resolving the sign questions or concerns.
Yeah, I just, I interpreted our sign as a sign, just the face of this, not the aesthetic of the brick, but again, I'm not a, that's how I interpret it, is just the face of the actual signage, the lit architectural sign of the business. That's how I have interpreted it. It's not the foundation, the footings, the aesthetic brick and all that.
The monument.
The monument itself. So that's all I was, because it was 179, 179 square feet, and I think our ordinance is only like 50. So I, it was something like that. And I was just, you see those numbers, it's a 300% increase, and I just wanted to make sure we're, you know, trying to button up this PUD as best we can, so.
Well, I would ask the question, the, I think we actually touched on it, if it was approved, subject to either modification, negotiation, et cetera, or is it accepted, it totally is submitted with all the attachments? And/or is that something that, as we go into detailed engineering and primary plat, that those items could be negotiated, I guess for lack of a better term?
I do not know the details of our ordinance that well enough to know if that could be negotiated at a later date. Because I mean, the concern now is, you know, if you said your attorney could argue that you could put a monument sign on all these different, that gives me pause now. Not it gives me pause now, it's just we got to make sure we have a plan in place where we're not putting monument signs. I know you're not going to do that.
No, no, but I literally, either to Adam or to her, to Nathan, is this considered a 20-acre zoning lot, PUD? Or is it, because they have residential, is that a zoning lot? And I have, I literally have, you know, we presented our document, which is in our PUD agreement documents, where we show the different, like, they're segregated. Literally, there's a retail section, there's the middle live-work section, there's a residential section, and they're all segregated into HOA, POAs, and separate agreements, correct? So I guess we'd have to figure out, would that be considered zoning lots?
Well, I will turn it over to, I mean, if Sergio and Adam, you can make a determination for us, or give us some advice on that direction?
My thoughts are with the sign package that's submitted would be part of the PUD rezone. Typically, when you get a PUD, you include a sign package that identifies what's permitted by ordinance of the PUD. And then when you come back and revisit for creating these lots of record, whether they're actually lots of record, and then how those lots would then be recorded, and then parceled out with PIN numbers. I think with what's being proposed through the rezone, the legal descriptions that are identified are the permitted uses within those legal descriptions of that PUD. So we've, as you indicated, you've segregated the residential, the live-work, and the retail. Those are all identified via the PUD legal description areas.
Is that how they were put together?
That's accurate.
So I guess, whether it's, again, I'd let the attorneys, it could be three zoning lots then by interpretation, and there's one for the villas, there's, although we exceed, I'll admit that the monument signs exceed what's in there even if it was per single zoning lot.
So what we could do over the next couple of weeks is prepare the sign package, identify what is in compliance with the current sign ordinance, and then identify which exceeds, and then the reason why.
I believe there's, I know there's a summary on the retail, at least on building-mounted faces. I know we, there's a zoning calculation in there, and I believe we're in conformance on all the building-mounted signs. I do know that the monument signs are not in conformance, at least on the main ones at Calumet. I know height-wise, they're bigger, and I just have to verify the area. I'm more than happy to know in the next couple of weeks to work all this out and submit that.
It's, Nick, I love the project. I just want to make sure we're doing, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
Understood.
Because it seems like PUDs are becoming more predominant in the town of St. John. Not that every project sets a precedent, but we just need to make sure we're, you know, trying to, trying to button things up, so. Just, I'll work, I'll take Sergio's lead, and you guys work through the signage package and try to get that accomplished. Access, you talked about access. You do have access to the north of the building, right? Pedestrian, not vehicular, correct? To the residential? I thought from the duplexes?
There's a private, there's a private access on the north side of the villas that does connect to the live-work component.
Okay.
But it's not, it's intended as emergency type or small access or police access.
And then, Sergio, do we have dark sky ordinance? I mean, you are following the dark sky ordinance, correct? From our town ordinance? Do we have a dark sky?
I'm not familiar that there is one in the lighting section of the zoning ordinance. I can check.
Okay. It'll probably be important to just do like a dark sky, if that's a concern?
Well, I know typically, I have to admit, I don't recall. Usually, there's a zero lot line, or a zero foot candle at the lot line.
Okay.
On terms of dark sky, I didn't think St. John had that.
But as long as we're following the zero lot line?
Yeah.
If that's a concern for the neigh, I appreciate you sharing the concerns with the neighbors. So if that's a concern, I just want to double, make sure we're following that.
John, the town's ordinance is based on dark sky.
Okay.
Ordinance, but it's, it doesn't follow it completely, but it's based on it.
So after 11 months, Nick, that's stuff we've, we're getting into the weeds, right? We're getting into the weeds. So, okay. As long as that, you know, if that's a concern on the neighbors, and if that's our ordinance, I just want to make sure we're following that. Anything else? If not, public hearing, January 5th. We have some house cleaning to do before then, and then we'll get going with the public hearings. Any other, before I let Nick go? Gentlemen, you have a Merry Christmas.
You too.
Happy New Year. We'll see you first Wednesday in January.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. New item on the agenda, Ravenwood Business Center Phase Two, Lot 8 and 9. This is a preliminary primary replat for one-lot subdivision. Sergio, could you walk us, I'm going to have, good evening, sir. I'm going to have Sergio just walk us through real quick what's being proposed, and then I'll turn it over to you.
So here on the screen, you see the area that is being proposed for a replat is initially part of Ravenwood Business Center Phase Two, Lots 8 and 9. The applicant is proposing to combine Lots 8 and a portion of Lot 9 to create this area that you see here. Essentially, this is what, what the proposal would be for what would now be Walnut Creek North Edition. The property is zoned C2 Highway Commercial District. And so you could see the, as I'm outlining here, the new lot that's being proposed, and the, it would retain its retail use, permitted use within there, so.
John, board, any questions before I turn it over to, are you Bill?
Richard.
Richard. Turn it over to Richard.
No, I'm good.
All right. Sergio, anything else?
Nope.
All right, if, name and address, or name and agent for the record?
Richard Christakis, one of the property owners, and just a very simple, we've got roughly five acres there, and subdividing down for this particular lot, just over 2 1/2, not changing any usage or anything, it's just simple, simple subdivision.
Questions, comments from the board? So the five acres is Lot 8, Lot 9, and Lot 10 put together?
Yeah.
So you're looking to put Lot 8 and 9 together for 2 1/2, and then you're going to leave, I'll say, 10 and 10A, a smaller lot?
Uh, yeah, there'll be smaller lots left over, but it's, it's just simply the corner, Earl Drive, Ravenwood, and 101st, that Lot 1.
My only concern is I think our ordinance minimum commercial size has to be 2 acres. So now you potentially have 10 and 10A, I'm just using that extra lot, trying to split 2 1/2 acres. So potentially, you would have to come back to the BZA for a lot variance because it doesn't meet the minimum, I think, am I saying that right, Sergio?
Um.
2 acres, I thought it was 2 acres.
I think in a C2 zone, I think the minimum lot size requirement is 32,000 square feet.
Oh, okay.
No problem.
There was no problem then?
Yeah.
Okay. My mistake. I thought it was, maybe I'm thinking of an overlay on 231. Okay.
Better to ask, right?
Better to ask. I just want to make sure, because this, is this in the US 41 overlay district? I just want to avoid the, I just want to avoid him then coming back and having a, needing a variance if he wants to split the remaining 2 1/2 acres. Because I thought that was what we did with the dentist, wasn't it?
Yeah, but that's, I think, is the 231 overlay district. This is in the US 41 overlay, yeah.
Okay.
The 231, those require the minimum of 2 acres, so.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to make sure, so if that, try to avoid asking for a variance if we have to split that last 2 1/2 acres, but it doesn't seem like that would be a concern. Anybody else?
Nope.
That was my only question I had.
Nope.
Ken, anything cause you?
No, this is an established business center. All of the utilities are existing, the drainage is already there. You're basically taking 1 1/2 lots and turning it into one lot. Leaving 1 1/2 lots for future.
Okay, very good. All right, any questions?
Nope.
Okay, so public hearing, January 5th. Did everything get, Ken, did you get everything you need to review?
Well, this is the first I've really seen it, is tonight, so I'm assuming all the utilities are already there, so I'm basically doing second, looking at the plot review, or plat review.
Okay. It's the holidays. He needs to have enough time to review, and I know he's probably going to take some vacation time, so we could potentially have the public hearing, but it's a decision of the board, but I always like to have his review before we make any decision, so as long as you.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. The discussion about the minimum of 2 acres, I just want to go back to that. Is this parcel in the US 41 overlay district?
It is.
Okay. So I believe there is, in the zoning ordinance, a minimum area for development in the US 41 district being 2 acres.
2 acres, okay.
So I just want to make sure, I'm not sure if that was.
Okay.
Clearly stated.
So you're just clarifying minimum, 2 1/2, 2 acre lot?
2 acres, yeah. So it's in, I'm looking at, it's our zoning ordinance, it's in Chapter 8, which is special districts, and then specifically, the US Highway 41 Overlay District in Section E, Section E1, except as provided, in this section, the minimum area for development plan within the US 41 district is 2 acres. So I just, I wasn't sure if that was clear before we let the applicant go. Petition go.
So we would have to get a variance to split the remaining 2 lots then?
We'd have to get a variant if, because of the overlay district.
The, would be the north half of Lot 9, because then the remnant parcel here would be less than 2 acres.
I just wanted to make sure, as you, as you look to make these changes.
Well, yeah, I guess it depends on the usage, you know, for the other lots, but.
I don't think it matters what the usage is. I think that it's going to be minimum 2 acre requirement.
Now, there is a provision, I'm going to read this. It says, "If a parcel of land or subdivision lot was recorded prior to the effective date of this ordinance," and the parcel, and I don't know when this was planted, I'm looking, I know there were lots.
It's been a few years.
Yeah, so that would have to be examined, but assuming that's the case, and the parcel or lot does not contain the minimum area required by this section, the undersized parcel or lot may be used for any use permitted in the US 41 district, provided that, at the time of the recording of the undersized lot, the undersized lot met the requirements for minimum lot size, then in effect, for a lot in the underlying primary zoning district, the owner of the undersized lot must include any adjoining vacant land, not separated by a street or public way, owned or owned by an affiliate or on or before the effective date, or at the time of application, which, if combined with the undersized lot, would create a parcel which conforms, or more closely conforms, to the requirements of this paragraph, and all other requirements applicable to the US 41 district can be met. So that would have, you know, we'd have to go through that and analyze it if, as far as dates and effective dates and when this was recorded and.
But if he's making a new lot right now, he would have to potentially subdivide the next 2 lots, correct? Because it would be a new recorded, that, that additional acreage that's not Lot 10 anymore.
The north half of Lot 9.
The north half of Lot 9 would have to be recorded sometime after today, or?
Yeah, I, I would, that would be a remnant, I suppose, but yes.
Okay.
I would generally agree with that.
So it doesn't, it would reset if we subdivided this Lot 10? Or Lot 8, excuse me?
My, again, it's, our zoning ordinance, minimum 2 acres unless the timing issue that will have to be worked out. I just didn't want you leaving 2 1/2 acre and then just not knowing that you would have to come back for a variance if you wanted to split that 2 1/2 acre up. But then we'll have to worry about, determine the timing of how this all plays out.
Do we know, do you have the dates of when that kind of went into effect?
I do not. I think it was prior to my time.
This is a recording of Phase 2. It looks like it was September 1999, September 2nd, 1999. So you've got Lot 8 here, Lot 9 there, and they're splitting Lot 9 and 1/2 to create a 2 1/2 acre lot. The north half of Lot 9 would be the remnant parcel, which is adjacent to Lot 10.
Lot 10 is not even 2 acres. Like almost 1 and 3/4.
We don't know.
The only thing I'm concerned about, they come in, not only are they asking for a lot size variance, and they're going to be asking for variance on building setbacks because they can't put a building large enough on that, so it just becomes a, somewhat of Well, Richard, let us do our due diligence, find out how this would play out. I don't know if we're going to have an answer for you tonight, but I, there's something that you need to, we, the board will get knowledgeable on in the next, before your public hearing.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Richard, is 2 1/2 the minimum you need? Do you need 2 1/2 for the, for, just asking?
For potential.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Same to you all.
Sorry, I thought that was going to be 3 more.
Yeah, me too.
Next on the agenda, Hunter's Run, Phase 1, Lots 6 and 7, Phase 3, Lots 24, 25. I think this is the one that are taking the triplexes and making them duplexes?
Correct.
Okay. Ken, there was no issue with you on those further?
No, I'm good with it.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the board? I apologize. John, you good? All right, the county?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good on that.
All right.
Yeah, I haven't seen the plat until tonight. You know, the one that I have is a tentative plat. That's how it's labeled. So what Sergio passed out today is, this is the first time I've seen this.
And then, just for the board's understanding, Ken is supposed to have at least 30 days to review items. Again, as we talked to the previous one, it's the holidays. I would imagine Ken would want to spend some quality time with his family. We could have the public hearing, but again, I would like to see Ken's review of any changes before we, you know, this board makes a decision. It's a smart business, so I don't want anyone to be upset or delayed by this, but it's not a delay, it's just proper process and protocol. Right, okay. Next on the agenda, the Continental Unit 2, Lots 33, 34, proposed preliminary and primary replat for a one-lot subdivision. Sergio, could you, this is new, give us the 411?
So there is a request to combine 2 lots in the Continental into 1 lot for a single-family home. You could see here in the aerial, it's just south of the cul-de-sac in Unit 2, and so it would be proposed second resubdivision of Unit 2 for Lots 33 and 34. You could see that here.
You good?
Yeah.
All right, if you introduce yourself.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Jarrett Leicas. I'm with Gander Builders. I'm the owner. I was hired by my client, Ms. Barb Taylor. She's going to be investing in the Continental subdivision. It's going to be one of the first houses to go up in there. I know there's one currently up there. I think it's the only one up there now. But her ultimate goal here is to resubdivide. She bought 2 lots. She wants to resubdivide and make it 1 lot, mainly to create an estate-like property. The home is going to be centrally located in the middle of what is now the 2 lots, going to be, hopefully, 1 lot. And she plans to build a very, very architecturally sound house, a lot of detail, a lot of eye candy. There's going to be, hopefully, a pool house involved, a pool, and like I said, kind of just, the overall goal is to make it an estate, so. Any questions, comments? I have preliminary design plans right now. I have about four copies. I can hand those out, and I have an inspiration photo from a house that we actually built in Frankfurt, Illinois, that's kind of going to give you a gist of what we're trying to accomplish. Not necessarily the same thing, but a lot of elements from that.
Sure. I'll take a peek. Anybody else?
Sure. So the house will be timbered frame. You'll see all the exposed beams in there. That would be a similar style to the exterior of the home that we're going to be doing. Sorry, I know it's small.
That's all right.
Just for the record. Just for the record.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, you guys can pass this round.
And if you scroll to the...
Looks similar to yours.
To the lot.
It does look like mine. A little bit smaller, but it'll do.
Thanks.
Awesome, sir.
Do you guys want these?
Yeah.
What, is it the same thing? Oh, yeah, that's...
Yeah, we got copies.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sergio, look this up.
Need a big house. Big house.
Again, questions, concerns, anything?
I can put my house in here three times.
Any questions or comments from the board? Again, I will comment.
Like it.
I don't know when Ken received this, he needs time to review it, it's, it's a resubdivision, and again, for the board, we usually, because if all the utilities are there, and it's a residential, and there's, there's no waivers, you're not asking for any sidewalk waiver or any waiver like that.
No.
Usually we do both at the same time, it's for the pleasure of the board, we do the primary, and as long as Ken's okay with everything he sees, we can give him both the primary and secondary at the same day, we've done, we've done that before.
Clumsy.
It's on the board, so wow. Any other questions from the board, Sergio, Ken, any comments for us, knowledgeable tidbits?
Not at, not at the moment, John.
All right. Very good. Hit that. Have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, we'll see you on January 5th for public hearing.
Awesome. Thank you, guys, Merry Christmas.
And you know all the public hearing requirements? Two newspapers, 10 days, you got all that?
Yep.
And you got to notify 300 feet, all that kind of good stuff? Okay, good.
Thank you, guys, Merry Christmas.
All right, thank you, you do the same. Next on the agenda, you've got us all to yourself, sir. Beautiful. All right, Tim, Gates of St. John, Unit 22, Tim, could you introduce yourself for the record, please, sir?
Tim Kuiper, Austin Kuiper Gessitis, here on behalf of LBL Development LLC tonight. The first item is just the final secondary plat for 75 lots, that's commonly known as Unit 22 of the Gates of St. John, obviously east of Klein, this was previously approved, and this is just the finalization of that area, nothing has changed in that area, it's just, again, the final plating of that.
Tim, this, 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 it's been a while, so I apologize for my, this was in the, this wasn't part of the annexed property, this was initially already in the town?
No, this was part of the property that was in the town, correct.
This was part of the property that was in the town?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I call it the middle piece.
Yeah, I just, there was a lot, there was a lot of moving parts, and it's, I think it's been a year and a half, and so I just want to verify that this was in the...
This was annexed, the next one is the one that was annexed, so item F on your agenda.
Okay, very good. Now, this one unit does not include the well, is that correct? Tim, you're going to have to...
The well, we did a very small subdivision, just two lots plus the well, that was earlier.
Okay, I just wanted to...
That was dedicated, and then we also did a quick claim deed over the town that was provided to Sergio and Andrew.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that was...
That was earlier.
August, when that approval was received, and then everything got signed and recorded, I want to say late September, early October, something like that.
I believe that was Unit 21C.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do, I have one, in order to figure out the developer's fee for lot 20, or Unit 22, I'll need to have the construction costs, and that's usually provided by either contracts or engineers.
No problem.
And since this was done under the old rules, they haven't paid any of the, usually, today's standard, we do $1,500 minimum or $200 a lot, well, that didn't get paid on this one, so it'll be based on 2% of the construction costs.
Okay. And you'll put that all in your?
Yep.
Review?
I will.
All right. Yeah, that's, we go on on secondary. Awesome, any other questions for Tim on this one? All right, that one's behind us. Next one, F, Gates of St. John, Unit 24, 25, 27, 28, this is preliminary plat review.
So again, Tim Kuiper here, Austin Kuiper Gessitis, on behalf of LBL Development LLC, what we have on the screen right now, actually, it would make more sense from a north-south perspective if they were transferred, but this plat on the top...
Here, Tim, 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 I apologize, I know it's easier for you to point like that, no, 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 you're, you're quite all right, do the best you can, but we'll need you in front of that mic.
Okay.
Okay. If not, Jason's going to walk out of that door.
No, I, I appreciate that. So the, the top picture that you see there before you, that's actually the southernmost part of the Gates of St. John, east of Klein.
And what unit is that?
That's 24 and 25.
So that's a southern?
Southernmost part, so that's right north of the Barman property, that then goes all the way down to 231. The bottom picture is then the northerly part of the Gates of St. John East, which then goes up to 101st and has a connection there.
And that's Unit 27 and 28.
Units 24 and 25, that also contains what's commonly known as well number nine, and you'll see that area reflected there, there's a certain councilman in particular that would like us to get this platted sooner than later so that we can get drilling out there, but that's part of that property and it's indicated on there.
So, Tim, is there any connectivity between that undeveloped acreage to the south?
There is, if, the larger square box on the left, if you go over one lot, you will see that there is a stub road there, that was planned in as you guys requested previously.
Okay.
Although the property owner to the south vehemently opposed it, but we included it.
I, I totally understand.
Yeah.
And are you saying 24, 25, 27 and 28 were not, were annexed into the town in 2019?
19, correct.
Okay.
Is it R2-PUD?
Correct. And that was clarified with the settlement agreement with the town back in April, it's R2-PUD, has to be a minimum of 60-foot lots, we dropped actually about 70 lots in total off of these two flats, or four units, however you want to, to characterize it, to increase the sizes of those lots, and then with all the other standard conditions, part of the Gates of St. John East Homeowners Association, not part of the original Gates of St. John.
I know I looked at the engineering before the lawsuit and all that stuff, but I'll have to have those engineering plans resubmitted since there's such a big change, so I'll need to have that for primary plat approval.
Yeah, so that should be no problem, the only thing that changed was they were spaced out, so the stubs for the water and the sewer are the only things that changed, the lines, the roads, nothing else changed because of the master plan.
Right, but the, but the grading plans, you know, where, you know, where does the water go between the houses?
Yep.
You know, that, that's all going to be affected.
Yeah, the pipeline easement.
Does that affect lot 20, 28, 33, 28, it could affect...
The NIPSCO parcel, is that overhead power lines, or is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, if you're, if you're driving on 231, you'll see the high tension lines that run in a northerly direction, and then as they get towards the top of that parcel, then they start to go towards Shererville.
Sergio, we have a new pipeline, I shouldn't say, well...
Setback easement?
Setback easement, how does that?
That does not apply to this parcel, again, pursuant to the settlement agreement, the rules that were in effect prior to that govern this property only.
Okay, can you repeat that for my clarification again, Tim?
So that new provision that was put in for the additional 50-foot setback, I know exactly what you're talking about, does not apply to this property pursuant to the agreement that we reached with the town in the settlement agreement.
Okay.
So there's no impact zone?
Specifically, it's, it's section 3 of the settlement agreement, and it provides that it shall otherwise be developed in accordance with the zoning and subdivision ordinances in effect as of June 2020.
What did you say, the minimum block width is?
60.
60.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, I didn't get that, the minimum size lot?
60.
The minimum width is 60.
60.
Okay, gotcha.
How are you, Yolanda, I'm sorry, I didn't know you on...
No, no, you're fine, I'm good, thank you, John, I logged in right after the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm sorry, my connection's terrible because of the winds today.
No, we're throwing paper around, so, Tim, just to help me clarify, 27 and 28 lead right into 24, 25, correct?
So 20, I think 26 is in between there?
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, 26B.
And this isn't all of Unit 25, right, this is only part of 25?
I forget if it's part of 24 or part of 25, it's all one of the...
The 11s.
It could be where it came.
Yeah, these, these say part of 25.
Repeat the question again?
All the lots are 60-foot, or on average, they're 60?
No, all of them have to have a minimum, minimum width of 60-foot per the agreement with the town, so before what we had submitted, there was 43s, there was 53s, and I, I mean, that was a year and a half ago, so I don't expect that you'd recall that, but they were all increased, so they admit the minimum width of 60.
So there are some 53s on here.
Yep.
There's a 53.
24, 31 is 50, 31, uh...
28, 55, 28, 52, 28, 51.
27, 48. Is that at the building line, or is that at the...
Is it on a cul-de-sac? I'm sorry, I only have a small version in front of me, I apologize, if it's a cul-de-sac, then that 60-foot has to be at the building line, if it's a cul-de-sac, I don't know what those numbers are.
Because one of these lots is 53 on the one end, and at the other end, it's even smaller, 49.89, so...
28, 55.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, 28, 55.
Which unit are you looking at, Nancy?
28, 55.
27, 28.
27, 28?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm 28, Unit 27 and 28.
Yeah, it's pretty much the lots on the south side of the subdivision, of Units 27 and 28.
Okay, did they catch?
Any set minimums?
60.
60.
Yeah, the all, all lots along the south property line.
All the ones along the south side.
28, 55, 28, 52, 51, 28, 100.
The reason why that could be is that road, to the north of that is the dividing line, so anything underneath that is part of the original annexed property, everything is near to that, I'm sorry, just a hundred second place in the...
So the 60-foot minimum applies to the 111 acres, which is the sandwich above and below, so that road is actually the line that goes north, that's required for those 60-foot, so the, the couple 53s there finish out the property that was previously put into the town a long time ago.
28, 1, or 2. Yeah, I see that. 27, 42 is 60, though.
Did you want to ask Ken about your drainage question?
53.
Because if not, it'd make me look too smart, because you caught it, not me. That's a great question.
Ken, I got a question for you.
53, 36.
Two, tell them what unit.
The Unit 27 and 28, we have extremely long lots, they extend into the drainage and easement, landscaping easement, they're up by Blaine Place.
Sure.
That cul-de-sac.
Yep.
Is that?
By today's ordinance, that would not be allowed, but in the old ordinance, it was.
It was.
east-west across the NIPSCO between these units of 27, 28, 24, 25?
Not between 27 and 28, and then 24 and 25, there is not, it's right to the north, but it ties in.
In Unit 26.
There's two of them in that area that sandwiches the two.
I would guess that's probably still 60.
Correct.
Okay.
And again, that was part of that master kind of layout that was presented initially.
Goes 58, 52, plus 1.6. Yeah, but it goes out to 61 at the other end, so it's...
NIPSCO's touchy about how many times you go across that property.
I'm, I, you know, I, I see you put connectivity to the south on Unit 24, you know, there's no south connectivity on Unit 25, that's, I'm all about dispersing of traffic.
What about this one?
That's my, 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 that's my sandbox, you know, soapbox, right? Connectivity, soapbox, I know this one was added.
When we talked about this before, at least the direction from the board was, because Barman wanted none, you guys wanted two, and you said put in at least one, so that's what we did.
I think that's, I think our ordinance only requires one.
You measure it right here.
And it, and it does, we were willing to do two, but Barman was not happy about it, he wasn't even happy about the one.
I, I get it, he's never going to move, but I don't like ever saying never.
Well, he won't, he won't be there forever, that's, you got to plan for that. And there is a connection to the subdivision to the east of the Barman parcel hall, so that was one of the considerations that was brought into that, too.
Okay. No, I, I was the one on the soapbox trying to get as much connectivity to the south to disperse traffic and...
People in green acres to the east, although that's county, there is a connection down that connects into Barman's property. You can see the road kind of, although not improve the, the right-of-ways there.
Any additional questions, comments?
I mean...
I mean, how, I was going to say, we got to verify the, the lot size.
Right, because, you know, if it's something previously, I get it, but I don't understand why you couldn't take the lot and give everybody else a little bit more than 60-foot, you know, because some of these are, like I say, 35, 47, so, we need to find out what the ruling was for the stuff down south of this, is that...
That's something we'll have to look into, yes, we'll have to get that verified.
That's something we can work with Ken on, too.
That's all I have.
And there is a road connection in 28 to the east, which is Shererville, but we put that connection in also, that stub.
I just, I always hate missing opportunities like this, because once this is, primary plat is approved, it's approved, you can't put a road in later, you got someone's backyard, so, it's just, that's a big piece of property, he owns all of it, right? He owns the whole southern half of this, the same individual, correct? Bar?
Oh, Barman?
Yeah.
Yeah, he owns everything south of, of 24 and 25 to 231, but he also has all the frontage on Klein, he has the connection over in, in the other one, but I think that's going to all be internally circulated because of the indot regulations on 231, I would imagine... be internally circulated because of the indot regulations on 231. I would imagine he would have to come into St. John because of utility concerns, otherwise you couldn't, you couldn't do anything, so you'll have control on Klein.
Just, we don't, again, I remember the conversation, it's just we only still only have one, it's just unfortunate with all that. All right, well, Ken, the drainage you're saying that I brought up is allowable?
The long lot lines?
Yeah.
Yeah, those were allowed underneath the old rules.
And then the impact zone, allowable in this?
Right, the impact zone is not going to be adhered to in this because it wasn't in the old ordinance.
And then we'll verify the lot sizes for, that would be unit 26, I believe, if that was prior. Okay. And is this, this is part of the settlement, these units as part of the settlement as well?
Correct, it's referred to in the settlement as the 111 acres, the middle part was 108, I know it's close, but that's the distinction between the two. So specifically, Section 3 of the settlement agreement references the 111 acres, which is the 27 and 28 is the north part of that, the south part of that is then 24 and 25.
Okay.
Thank you for. And what settlement are you talking about?
The settlement agreement that BLB and LBL reached with the town in April of this year regarding the various lawsuits and things that were going on.
With the recapture fees?
That was part of it, yes.
And Tim, this went through a public hearing for the annexation, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I didn't know if they got all deferred when change of town council and?
No, the, I mean, if you want the history, the annexation moved forward, the zoning R2, PUD, everything was done, it was effective January 1. The new council came in and introduced a resolution to request the Plan Commission look at rezoning to R1. That process was started at the same time we were doing primary subdivision, COVID hit, everything got delayed, and, don't quote me, either June or July, the town and my clients agreed to stay both the rezoning that the town had started to initiate and us on the primary plat side. And then, over a year period of time, then we came to some resolution on all outstanding matters.
It's not settled yet, is it, Tim?
Which? Well, the settlement agreement is the settlement agreement until it's not.
No, no, I understand.
I mean, not all parts, not all parts have been completed, I mean, 17B last couple weeks ago was a problem, but it's there until it's not.
No, no, I just, I agree, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know the jargon, but.
Yep.
All right. Nothing like Sergio has anything to do over the next couple of weeks, so this is scheduled for a public hearing. Again, Tim, I'll give you the same comment I've been giving everybody. We'll look for Ken's review letter, hopefully he has time to review everything, the information, see for with the public hearing if. Pleasure with the board.
All right. Try to make his job as easy as possible.
I appreciate it, sir. Questions, comments, before we let Tim go and enjoy the rest of his evening? Sergio, Ken, comments?
No, just need the engineering and the plats and I'll see what I can get done next week.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, have a good Christmas, have a good New Year.
Happy New Year. Sorry, Jason, for all the walking away from the mics. All right.
Me, too.
No, he's 72.
He didn't hear you.
He wasn't by the mic.
All right, we are. Sorry.
Gee, that one more.
I'm going to turn that over to Sergio or Chris, somebody.
Yeah, so we, at the town, have encountered an issue of a type of business that had not been considered when our zoning ordinance, or may not have even been around when the zoning ordinance was created, and more specifically the definitions. So now there's a fun new device called a vape pen and electronic vape cigarettes, et cetera. So we, I believe, Adam drafted an ordinance to add into the definitions, vape, vape product, clarify tobacco products, because we would like to regulate this type of business. Ideally, we would not like a ton of vape shops popping up everywhere.
So we're just adding this term vape, it probably just says tobacco currently, vape is not currently in it, so we're just adding vape to cover this type of activity?
Well, yes, if I can elaborate, Mr. Chairman, so currently, the zoning ordinance defines tobacco shop.
J- sorry.
As an enclosed establishment principally engaged in selling tobacco goods or merchandise to the public for personal or household consumption. So the definition of tobacco shop essentially requires that it have sales more than 50% of its total sales. I mean, that's essentially how I interpret that definition, to be principally engaged in the sale of tobacco goods. Currently, any vaping products would not fit within that description, would not constitute tobacco goods or tobacco products, because vaping pens and vaping liquids involve no tobacco. And so rather than simply adding vaping to the zoning ordinance with a similar definition, meaning principally engaged in vaping goods, it required that we eliminate the reference to an establishment being principally engaged, because arguably, a tobacco and vape shop could drive perhaps, I'm just going to hypothetically, 48% of its sales from tobacco and 48% of its sales from vape products, liquids, and, you know, and therefore not meet the definition of either.
Okay.
So the ordinance that I was asked to draft basically identifies and defines a vape shop to be an enclosed establishment engaged in the display, sale, distribution, marketing, furnishing, or offering of vaping products, provided however that any retail establishment, automobile service center, or similar retail use that only sells vaping products as an ancillary sale shall not qualify. So the ordinance is intended to be directed to establishments that are, again, primarily engaged in the sale of vaping products and paraphernalia. I believe you can buy vape products such as liquid and pens at other places, like gas stations, or you might even be able to purchase it at Strack and Van Tills. I don't know, I haven't been to Strack's, I don't vape, so I don't know this. The same can be said for tobacco products. I know you can buy tobacco products, like cigarettes, at Strack's or at a drugstore like Walgreens or at a, you know, at a gas station. So for the same reason, we've defined tobacco shop to be basically, you know, an enclosed establishment engaged in the display, sale, distribution, marketing, furnishing, or offering of tobacco, tobacco products or tobacco paraphernalia, again, with an exception being provided however that any retail establishment, automobile service station, or similar retail use that only sells tobacco products as an ancillary sale shall not qualify. So we're trying to exclude by these definitions, gas stations, you know, convenience stores, drugstores, grocery stores. And so also in the definition, we're going to add what is an ancillary sale. So that has to be defined. And so an ancillary sale under this ordinance is defined as sales made by a retail establishment that uses no more than 2% of its gross floor area or 100 square feet, whichever is less, for the display, sale, distribution, delivery, offering, furnishing, or marketing of tobacco products or vaping products. So I've attempted to define what an ancillary sale is for purposes of the ordinance, and essentially, the intent is if it's a very small part of the overall business operations within that business, then it would qualify as an ancillary sale. So we're adding a number of definitions to the zoning ordinance, as set forth in the ordinance itself that's presented to you this evening. There are also definitions for tobacco products, for tobacco, for tobacco paraphernalia, for vaping products. That would all be included in the zoning ordinance so as to provide some means of regulating the location of tobacco and vape shops in the town of St. John. I would also further add, currently, as I indicated, tobacco shops are defined, and that type of use is permitted in certain zoning districts under the current zoning ordinance. Specifically, I'm looking at the schedule of uses in Chapter 3. Tobacco shops are permitted in C1, C2, and C3 districts, as well as industrial districts. It's also permitted in the Route 231 overlay district. It is not permitted otherwise unless there's a special exception granted in the US Highway 41 district and a town center overlay district. So again, in the town center and the US Highway 41 overlay district, it requires a special exception. I don't know why the ordinance as written allows a tobacco shop in the Route 231 overlay district and requires a special exception in the US Highway 41. This is before my time, and from a, just from a practical standpoint, I can't really think of why that was done that way. Why 231 would be an acceptable place for tobacco and vape shops and 41 would not or would require a special exception, perhaps because 231 wasn't, you know, as developed 10 years ago or 12 years ago when the zoning ordinance was adopted. So I think the Plan Commission and ultimately the town council will have to consider, does it want to require a special exception in the 231 district as well, to make it similar to what it is currently for the US Highway 41 district, or does it want to continue to allow a vape shop or tobacco shop to be allowed in the US, I mean, the Route 231 overlay district without any further review or approval by either the Plan Commission or the town council? So I think that's a consideration that has to be taken into analysis, I guess, for purposes of this proposed ordinance. So.
Okay.
That's it in a nutshell.
Questions, comments? Regarding US 231, does anyone have any consideration or comments regarding that?
I would not like it there either, you know. Same as 41.
What would that require, Adam?
I'm sorry?
What would it require?
To make 231 have the same special exemption.
So all it would require is that that be referenced specifically in the ordinance that is adopted by the town council ultimately to change the zoning ordinance or amend the zoning ordinance to essentially reflect that under, in Route 231 district, a tobacco shop and a vape shop would require a special exception, as opposed to being a permitted use. And that would be done by the ordinance itself, ultimately, you know, considered by the town council.
This ordinance?
This ordinance, yes.
Okay.
In this, in this ordinance.
So something for us to consider at, since we can't take any action tonight, but something for us to consider, maybe given direction to Adam at our January 5th, because I concur. I would say if our US 41 and US 231 are supposed to be our, more of our main retail and our, that we would have, we would have that same, but we'll make a, do we need to make a motion to, I mean, for us to have it added to this? I mean, we can't make any decisions tonight.
No, you can't vote on anything tonight. I think you're simply giving guidance. I can certainly prepare the ordinance to incorporate, you know, the comments and what I think is the direction of this body. Ultimately, at the January 5th meeting, there is going to be, there'll be a public hearing, so this requires a public hearing, it requires notice. The ordinance has to be available for 10 days in the, in the town hall for the 10 days prior to the hearing. This is just the process for any change in the zoning ordinance. And then at the public hearing, you'll hear comments, you'll then eventually certify a recommendation, favorable, unfavorable, or no recommendation to the town council, and then it would be able to take it up later in January at one of its meetings. But I think for purposes of tonight, as I understand it, my sense is that the Plan Commission finds no distinction between 231 and 41 when it comes to this type of use, you know, specifically tobacco and vape shops. I would even offer that there's quite a bit more residential along the 231 corridor than there arguably is along the 41 corridor, and so therefore perhaps maybe there's a greater likelihood for, you know, minors or, you know, I'm not suggesting that, you know, minors are vaping or would, you know, it's illegal, I believe it's, the cutoff age is the same for tobacco products, so they still can't buy those products legally in Indiana. And there are regulations that prohibit the location within a certain distance of schools, and I know that's been, that was part of the consideration that Chris and I had talked about earlier. So I will prepare the ordinance and make those changes, and so it'll be available for the meeting on January 5th. And then on the 5th, you'll have, again, after the public hearing, you can then take it up and consider a vote at that time regarding certification.
And then this will take effect, based on our recommendation, goes to the town council in January, they will make the final determination whether accept the ordinance or not, and then it takes effect at that time.
Well, if, right, so remember, if they, if they accept it as written, without making any other changes, then it becomes adopted on the night it's approved by the town council. We did this exercise last year regarding the change in the notice requirements, and at that meeting last year, the, if you recall, the town council decided they didn't want to accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission regarding one newspaper as opposed to two newspapers, and in that case, if that occurs, it comes back to the Plan Commission for additional consideration.
Got it. Questions, comments for Adam, Sergio, or Chris?
Nope.
Nope. Anything for the good of cause, anyone?
Nope.
All right, everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas.